Call meeting to order. Ask Dr. Diggin to lead in the pledge of allegiance.
I'm gonna ask for the help of McKenzie and Embley to lead us in our pledge today.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Call roll please.
Ms. Claude Belter? Ms. Nyler?
Here.
Ms. Edwards?
Here.
Dr. Bridges? Mr. Jester?
Here.
Colonel King?
Here.
Thank you. Special guests and special recognitions.
Tonight, I think we have four different special guests. One, we weren't quite sure of until last week, and I would like to introduce everybody. Ms. Mary Bradley, our newest board member.
Yeah.
And I think I can speak everybody. We're excited to have a former-- how many years did you work in the district?
Thirty-eight and a half.
Thirty-eight and a half. She knows the district.
Yeah.
Former educator, and so that'll be a great addition to our board. So, Ms. Bradley, we're glad to have you. All right. Now, I have three different-- no particular order. No particular order. I'm gonna go ahead and start with Ms. Hannah.
Doctor.
Doctor Hannah.
It's new, we got used to it.
Doctor Hannah. So, Doctor Hannah, if you'll approach the podium. Doctor Hannah just recently defended her dissertation, and her research is very closely connected to our staff and our students. And Colonel King, this is research. I think we need to scoot up the chain of command into Washington because I think she has a lot to say.
All right. So, I wrote it down because if not, I will talk forever. One, I'm passionate about my subject, and two, just ask my husband over there. So, I'm gonna read if you don't mind. I said, "So, let me first start with some statistics. There are currently 4 million military-connected children in the United States and abroad. Eighty percent of them attend public schools. And in the state of Oklahoma alone, with our five major military installations, one out of every 16 jobs in the state is impacted by the armed forces in some manner." Ooh. Most minority groups are pretty easy to identify based upon either appearance or dialect, but military-connected adolescents do not have any outward indication that they are members of a military culture, a culture that makes up 21 percent of our population in Lawton Public Schools. So, looking at these numbers, I had a desire to learn more about this large, rather invisible minority in my classroom every day. The more I noticed in my research, I've noticed it focused either on looking through the eyes of adults reflecting back on what it was like to grow up as a part of this culture. It was woefully out of date, or that all the virtually-- all the research focused about talking about military kids, but didn't talk with military kids, about their thoughts, their experiences as a part of this culture. So, to try and address this gap, I interviewed nine military-connected adolescents between the ages of 14 and 18. I did extensive interviews with them, and so we talked about how they defined themselves as a part of the military culture, the kinds of experiences they've had growing up, and how they perceive and make sense and respond to those experiences. So, as such, I found military-connected adolescents view themselves in four different ways. They're confident about themselves and who they are. They are empathetic towards others. They are more mature, or perceive themselves to be more mature than their civilian counterparts, and they are adaptable and resilient as they become masters of unpredictability. As far as their experiences, they talked about the family obligation of the military as a parent, always having to be a soldier first, the ups and downs of the high mobility of their life, learning to traverse a new school, finding new friends, having to say goodbye when a parent heads off for war, and the trials and tribulations that come from the reunification of a family after long deployment. In sharing how they make sense of and respond to their lives and experiences, the participants talked about the high expectations that they have from their parents and also the ones they have for themselves. They discussed multiple sources of adolescent thriving, a lack of outsider awareness of military life, various advantages and aggravations of growing up as part of this culture, and tons of coping strategies, including religion, counseling, relationship with siblings, relationship with educators, extracurricular participation, and in some instances even detaching from their emotions. Finally, the lasting impact of growing up as part of the military culture and how it impacted their sense of self and the role that it'll play that they have in the future. As such, several of these findings have implications for us as educators, and there were four. There needs to be a better identification of military-connected adolescents in our public schools. Can be as simple as checking a box when we fill out demographics. We need specific professional development that focuses on military-connected adolescents, of which I have not had in my 11 years here as a Lawton Public Schools employee. We need to develop and reinforce support systems in our secondary schools. We're doing good. We could do better. And we need to find ways to reinforce and grow resiliency among the children of this invisible minority. Military-connected adolescents face hurdles on a scale often unmatched by civilian counterparts. Their resiliency in the face of these experiences and their ability to thrive continues to be an inspiration to the youth, parents, and educators who encounter them. And so, if military families are the backbones of our fighting force, allowing children to be left behind, to remain invisible, is indefensible. And that was my study. Here.
What was the title of your dissertation again?
Invisible Minority: Military-Connected Adolescents in Secondary Schools.
All right. Fabulous.
Okay.
Any questions?
I hope we get to hear your ideas sometime. I'm sure you've got lots of them.
Dr. Polk is already working on-- we were-- and it's something we had never thought-- I've been here six years. It never dawned on us that, like you said, there had never been any specific training. We've got military, the compact, the coalition. Dr. Polk is already enlisted.
There was years ago when we started the whole military child with the Army.
We've had it with administrators, but we don't know if-- I don't remember having it with teachers, so.
Yeah, we brought in some experts, and we need to do that again. It's been way.
Well, we got an expert right here.
That's right.
No better expert in the nation right now. Thank you, Dr. Hannah.
MacArthur High School. I teach juniors English.
Juniors English. My kiddos will have you in a few years.
Oh, good. Tell them to be ready.
Thank you, Dr. Hannah.
She's a good one. She's tough.
Good.
That's great.
And next, I asked Mr. Stallworth to join us at the podium, and he's gonna share about his program. Central Middle School, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Good evening. Deciding Board Member, Dr. Diggin. I'm Ken Stallworth from Central Middle School. My counterpart isn't here today, Deandre Swanson. We run, sponsor Young Men in Action at Central. This year, we expanded. Deandre had the gentlemen's of Lawton High. So, you know, for years-- well, this is our second year in existence, and our biggest question was, "How can we keep the program going once they left middle school?" And we're blessed, and so now we'll have them at Central, and now we can keep them at Lawton High. And over the eight years, we hope that we can make a change in what we're trying to accomplish. What we are, we are a mentoring program. We basically foster leadership and character development. And so, the next thing you may ask, "How do we do this?" We do a lot of community service projects. Just in this year alone, we've been to the veteran home. We did an appreciation breakfast for the staff at Cedar Crest Home. We just-- we run the bell for the Salvation Army. Last night, we worked at Good Year-- well, Saturday, we worked Good Year's Christmas party, and we did the Fall Festival out on Fort Seale. So, we try to keep the kids active. The main thing is just building self-worth. And when our-- we first thought about this, it was just creating a vision, and it all came about because we were so amazed at the number of children that not only have been outside of Lawton, but outside of the state of Oklahoma, you know? And we're saying like, "Okay, how can you set goals if you don't have a vision?" You know? And then our thing was, "Okay, we need to be responsible for treating that vision for them, and how do we do this?" Last year, towards the end of last year, we took a group of 10 kids to Memphis. We went to the Civil Rights Museum, and we were also fortunate enough to take them to President Clinton Presidential Library, you know? And so, it's just getting them involved in things to where-- and the other thing is too, we try to do things that don't incur costs because of the area that we serve, and we serve a lot of a low social economic area, and we have a lot of children that are at risk. You know, we try to provide things for them that doesn't cost them anything. Right now, what we have going on this weekend, we have a youth conference. This is gonna be our second year doing this. We're having a youth leadership conference. We have two guests. We have Arthur coming in, Stevenson Hudson, that wrote The Chosen Warrior, and Dr. Marco Columbus from Cameron is coming over. We're doing four breakout sessions. One is Thinking for Change. It's basically, "Your greatest power is your choice," you know? And we try to say, "Don't let life circumstances dictate what you do in life, or define you as a person." The other thing, we're gonna do Dressing for Success. We have someone coming over that's gonna do financial literacy, and let me see. I wanna say that's about it, but it's gonna run from eight to three on Saturday. We're looking to have a good time, and we're looking to have a big turnout. Ms. Coates being very gracious in helping us get the information out. We do appreciate that. And again, thank you for having me here this evening. Do you have any question for us?
I think you helped friends of the library at our book sale.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, we did.
I'll tell you what, a group of guys that work, they work really hard, but they can eat pizza like me.
Yes, yes. Gotta feed you hell. You want them to come back.
I have a few questions.
Yes, ma'am.
What, you said you're out of Central?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Could you-- can kids from other schools participate or not?
Our goal is that our program can become a model program for the other schools in the city. And what I've done this year, I've reached out more in the community, because my biggest thing is, you know, sometimes things can get so big to where you don't follow through, you know? And that's my biggest fear, because a lot of these kids have people that's in and out of their lives consistently. And my thing is, if we're gonna start this, we're gonna be here to finish. And that was the greatest thing about Deandre going to the high school. You know, now, not only can we model our program at the middle school, we can in the high school, so therefore we have them for eight years, and we can make a better, a bigger impact in their life. But yes, ma'am.
So, the barrier is really just somebody being willing to step up and run programs?
Right. Because at the other schools, you know, you might get someone, and they might not be as committed as you are, and it really takes a lot of your time. And like I said, that's the main thing. We don't really spend a lot of money, but it takes a lot of time to try to run the program.
Where do you get the money from? I mean, obviously, are you fundraising for it or what?
This year, we got a community grant from Walmart. They gave us 500. And like I said, we worked a good year, and we got two feet-- and some of the stuff would come out of pocket, you know? But the thing is, the cost is so minimal, you know, that we can get done what we need to do without really putting a lot of, you know, without it costing a lot, you know? Because we still want the kids to have that experience of giving, you know? Because, like I said, we really trying to make them feel good about themselves, because we really trying to, you know, just change the way they-- their perception of how they do things. It's easy to give back, you know? It don't cost any money to give yourself, you know? And that's what we try to do there through the program.
How often and when do you meet?
We meet every Thursday, per se, but like lately, we've been doing so many events to where normally they'd be more logistics.
Kind of like right after school?
Yeah, in the morning. We meet from 8:05 to 8:25. Our program-- our principal has been so supportive of our program. We do Read Across America with Weather Year, you know? So, we take about 30 to 40 kids over there, and we read to them, you know? But we tried to limit the amount of time that the children are out of class, and so that's the biggest thing. So, you know, we're very mindful of that, to where we don't pull them out of class for any length of time, so. But like I said, we really try to do a lot, and we have a-- we got a lock-in scheduled for April. We're taking them camping in March. The Lawton Police Department came by and did block a 30-minute session on us for gang awareness, but in our lock-in, we're gonna expand that more, you know? We're gonna do some more curriculum things, some workshops and stuff like that, because Lawton has a large gang population. So, the thing is, we wanna address that now, you know? We wanna address that to where you know that you have another alternative, you know? And that's the, you know, that's the biggest thing. What we're just trying to do, just trying to modify their behavior.
Sounds wonderful. Thank you for doing this program.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. If you'd come up. Now, while Ms. Robinson's coming up, you'll have to tell us the school and everything. When I was in school, I remember getting the-- a certain book out of the library. They had a list, and we had to read them. And I'm gonna let her-- I mean, I don't know when it started, but it's just, it's such an honor for us to have somebody. Ms. Jackson brought you to our attention. It's such an honor to have somebody from our district, so I'm gonna pass it off to you without stealing any of your thunder.
Hi, I'm Allegra. I am proud to be one of your librarians at your elementary schools. I'm at Crawsy Park Elementary, and I'm at Carriage Hills Elementary, and there's no better job in the world. Several years ago, I started promoting in my library the Sequoia nominees from the Oklahoma Library Association, and realized that nobody was reading them, and nobody cared. So, I started the Sequoia Club and gave incentives and shirts and prizes and anything I could do to make sure our students were reading the books. And it was great, until then, I found out now that they were reading the books, that some of the books were really boring, or over their head, or just not relevant to where our students are emotionally or reading level-wise. And so, then I started asking, "What is the Sequoia Committee, and who are they, and where do they come from, and how do you get on the committee?" And so, attending conferences and committee meetings and all this, finally got to talk to the right people and realized who they were and where they came from, and put my name in, and it was several years, and this year, I got a magic email that said, "I'm now part of their committee, and I am ready." So, yeah. I'm ready, and as the mom, as a mom myself of four children, I not only realize the importance and of reading every day, but the importance of reading quality literature. So, I am ready and honored to be your representative. Thank you.
Very proud to have a Lawtonian on that committee, so I wanna-- you all are all welcome to stay, but if you need to step out, we understand.
Bye.
But thank you all again.
Great enthusiasm.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm good. See the back of her shirt?
Sequoia list. I just.
It's fantastic. Okay. Number five, departmental reports.
Yes, under departmental reports, we have the written reports, and if the board doesn't have any specific question over those, we'll move on to action item number five, B.
Okay.
And under five B, we have proposed adoption of policy DEC-E1, which is an extended leave request for support employees only, and we have Ms. Ellis, if you have any questions. This form, I'll let you explain what it is.
At this point, I'm only here for questions. I think that it is very self-explanatory, and DEC is our sick leave policy. This would simply be a formal way of allowing our support employees to request sick leave when it's necessary with documentation, and I move that you adopt that policy.
I'll move for approval.
Call roll please.
Ms. Nyler?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes. Thank you.
Under item act-- under item five C, we have proposed revisions to the policy D E C A, which is a Family Medical Leave Act, and again, I'll let Ms. Ellis.
As you can see, this is in draft form, and it doesn't have all of the strikeouts that I usually present to you, so it's a very clean copy. This is a result of an advisement from the Wage and Hour Division, saying that they would really prefer that we have our Family Medical Leave Act as precise as possible and that it go along with their fact sheet number 28. So, this is the adaption from fact sheet 28, and I would ask that you would consider that. And if you have questions, give me the opportunity to answer those questions for you, and then move for adoption at our next board meeting.
Is this information only?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. All right. The board didn't have any questions over that. Item five D, again, an information item. We committed SEDEXO to come give us an update in December, and here we are. So, you all have met Jeremy Tanner, I think, and Eleanor may not have made it.
No, Eleanor apologizes. She has had some unforeseen circumstances. That doesn't allow her to come this evening, but she does say hi and gives her welcome. Good evening, board. Thank you for allowing me to give you an update. My name is Jeremy Tanner. I'm the Director of Facility Operations. I'd like to go over a few highlights regarding the SEDEXO transition within our Facilities Management Department. So, to date, we've completed all of the asset tagging as far as facility equipment, your HVAC and your electrical equipment, but one thing I would like to add is, within that asset tagging, all rooms within each facility also have an asset tag. If you were to look in the entry door on the right side of that frame, you would see a small asset tag with a barcode. And why that's important is, we are getting to the final stages of uploading all this information within the new Work Order Management System, MAXIMO. This is building a more intelligent database so that we begin to track and to try to pull down reports as far as efficiencies concerned and how we handle preventive maintenance and responses to different issues within the facilities. It'll allow us to put that information together to make informative action plans for improvement, for instance. As I said, we're at the last stages of uploading that information. We still plan on the new Work Order Management System to go live January 1st. In connection with that, we have the preventive maintenance schedules for that primary equipment that's also going to go live January 1st. MAXIMO ensures that the scheduling and the tracking and the follow-up for that preventive maintenance is performed, and it is trackable so that we can see that and have transparency. One way that we know that that provides value is that this equipment is always gonna have hands on it, consistently being maintained. It also gives our technicians the ability to observe issues before they may occur. It also allows us to observe equipment life cycles so that beforehand, we can coordinate if they need to be replaced and so on. MAXIMO Training for Principals is scheduled for December 17th to the 19th. It's for principals, secretaries, and custodial leads. We were able to pull in an extra trainer. Our plan is to have a train-to-trainer session so that someone is within the district, always available to be able to help somebody who may need refreshment, education, things of that nature. Also, on top of that, we have people who would be administrating the tool. Our administrator within Facilities Management, our operations manager, they will receive more training during this week, and then also, we have refresher training sessions for our technicians who had previously received training. The next thing I would like to highlight is our site management applications. Concentration-wise, this is really for our grounds and our custodial departments. For instance, as far as custodial is concerned, this tool, over the last four months, we've been uploading information that are-- that is site-specific for this tool. And so, we will be able to observe all the custodial and ground schedules of work, be able to compare that to industry standards and to what the district needs, and to be able to make informative decisions on whether we need to make changes of schedules, personnel resource changes, shifts, and, you know, these types of decisions that is based on data and not just, "Well, we feel like we need this. We feel like we need that." It'd be able to have hard information to be able to make those decisions on. But one thing that I'm excited about is the quality assurance applications. There is the ability within this tool to have applications that we can create inspection lists, inspection lists that are custodial, ground, and even, even though it may be somewhat new territory, it can also apply to the facility maintenance, that we can be able to look and observe at each of these things and to monitor where we need to make improvements. And as we make those improvements, we'll be able to follow up and pull reports to see where we still may need areas of efficiency or to spotlight where we've had successes. One way that we're able to support our present custodial employees, for instance, using this tool, is where we do see performance issues, we can provide on-the-spot training. Thank you. We can provide on-the-spot training to provide more support for them. So, instead of going and just pointing out, you know, "This is areas of improvement that you need to make," we can incoordinate with that, go, "And here's the training to do that," and better support our employees with that. The last thing I would like to highlight is in regards to the facility operations purchasing. We held a vendor fair December 3rd, and to be honest with you, the turnout was not what we expected. It was a little low. I do believe that I have a reason for that on the positive side of things. We've been working very hard to make communications with the local businesses and to show our support for them. We also are using at the same time, that as an incentive to request information from them so that we can begin to add them as vendors within the SEDEXO system as we move forward. We made so many communications, and I started receiving so many replies back already getting that information that I do need, that we figured that within those communications, they figured to opt out of coming to that first vendor fair, because we're already in the process of talking to one another. In those conversations that I've had with them, and in the conversations with those that did show up at the vendor fair, one thing that we would like to do in regards to future planning is to not just have one vendor fair a year and go, "Oh, you know, here's some cookies, and here's a packet." But what we'd like to do is have one more in January, one more in February, so that we make sure to try our best to reach all local suppliers. But then, we like to have quarterly meetings. They could come in, they could network together. SEDEXO, of course, provides support for sites outside of Lawton, outside of Oklahoma. Perhaps we are-- what we're trying to do is maybe locate those contacts to bring them in and to give our local businesses a chance to branch out even further, to network even further, so that they can truly see that we're really trying to support them on a consistent basis, not just a once-a-year basis. Plus, it keeps us with face-to-face communications with those local businesses that we would like to support, that support us when we're in need of supplies and/or services provided. So, that builds and strengthens that relationship we have with them. Moving forward, as we do those quarterly events, we're adding them into our vendor system, but we have to work also with LPS purchasing and procurement. At this time, we're in the beginning stages of identifying the spending since our contract commencement, so that whatever services were paid for, supplies were paid for, we can begin to identify those costs and credit back the district so that we can reconcile since the contract has started. Since that time, we have effectively transitioned the custodial inventory and had that signed off on as part of that process. So, it's a slow process, but we're getting there and we're moving. What I would like to say on more of a personal basis, even though they have kind of an official thank you there, I have been to several sites in my past in my career. This is the only site that I've received this much welcome and this much support. You know, coming in from a SEDEXO management services point of view, I feel like that I'm part of the district. Everybody that I've worked with in this room and outside of this room has made this transition easy for me, and I'm enjoying being a part of the team. So, do you have any questions for me?
Sounds great. I love that you're working with our local vendors.
Excellent.
Very important.
Have we still not-- I know the original plan was to not let any of the staff that was in it, you know, that was here before, to not let anybody go when the transition came. Are we still-- is that still what's happening, other than for disciplinary things?
That is absolutely the plan. I was able to, early on, attend, for instance, a custodial lead meeting that was already planned, and of course, we've also had these conversations within the facilities and grounds. That is still the plan whatsoever. Just to clarify, when I was talking about the SDS tool, as far as examining those schedules and personnel resources, hindsight, I probably should have included this, because it's easier to see it than to articulate on it, but we're able to see school, for instance, and see their present schedule, and then we can see what really the needs are. Now, that's before talking to the principal, you know? Those communications also have an effect in that, but we can begin to look at, "Well, maybe this personnel, we can just merely shift to where the need is." And so, we can take these resources and better allocate the resources that are already there so that we can be more efficient with our performance, honestly. So, that's more of the explanation on that side of it.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Tanner? All right. The next item on our agenda is item five E, and this is an information item.
So that's more of the explanation on that side of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Tanner? The next item on our agenda is item five E, and this is an information item as well. And for this, we'll have Mr. Cook from our Transportation Department share about a GPS system he's considering for our district.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity tonight to talk about something that I think is a positive for not only LPS, but for the Lawton community. And what I'm speaking of is a school bus fleet and ridership reporting information system. And there's three parts to this. The first one is going to be a GPS. The second part is going to be a parental portal. And the third part is going to be a student ridership notification system. What we have here, looking at this, and I'm sorry that it's kind of tough to read, but this is what the GPS system will do for LPS. This is real-time information. It gives us the location of all buses. We receive calls, numerous calls, about where buses are. It takes time to be able to run that information down because it's notification through our drivers. And with this, I think it makes us more efficient. It gives us more transparency, and overall, it falls into the big rocks of the Board of Education, which are accountability and safety. This right here, this slide, it shows you for activities. We run about 45 activities a week, and they go all over Oklahoma and surrounding states. And with this, we'll be able to track where our buses are. Some features to this system are speed and time data. It lets you see if you have stops that are missed. It gives you mileage reports, gives you updates on diagnostics of engines and things. So it's very helpful, it's very useful. It's going to take, it's going to help with our daily routines. The second part that we have is called a Z-Pass. And if you look up here, this system right here, it's scanning. So each student, what they will do, they will have their ID card, their RFID card, and when they get on the bus, they will scan on and they will scan off. With, once they go into the parental portal, it's being downloaded, this information will be pushed out to each parent. It will tell them when their child got on the bus, when their child exited the bus. It will tell them time, it will tell them location. Reason that I think this is, this is one of the most important parts of this is that it gives us a safety issue. It gives us peace of mind for parents. It gives us transparency of where the bus is, at what time, and that's peace of mind. Also, and there's different uses for this, and it was, I thought it was kind of cool that it may be used for the ID, the cafeteria, the library, improve campus security. I mean, there's different types of uses for this, it's just not one-dimensional. And the cool thing about it is that these are ideas they will already have. We will be transitioning the elementary using these, and that's something that we're putting in place for this. Looking here, this is just what will look like a real-time ride count. At any point, we can pull this up and we can see, it's a little different. Our, they have those numbers, ours, our buses will be a little different. But it'll show like the AM session, well, bus had 65, or in the session number two, they had 34. So it gives you real time. And the other thing is that when we need to call, the first of the year, you always have students that may have got on the wrong bus. We're calling, trying to find these students. At this time, we can pull a name, we can look at it, and it'll register where this child and what bus they got on and what time. So, once again, safety issues come into play, and I think it's going to help us in that matter.
A new high-tech tracking system is being tested in Lakewood. The idea is to improve student safety on school buses. New at Six, Coltske elders reports it's a tracking system that pinpoints exactly where every student is at every moment.
Thank you.
Beeping you here means the student is now being trapped by the Clover Park School District. Each time the student gets on and off the school bus, they electronically sign in and sign out. That way, if there's an accident, like what happened in a nearby district, the transportation headquarters will know exactly who's on the bus. Same for emergency evacuation, like here at Clover Park High School a few years ago. School officials will know where every student went. The district says it will especially help in cases like Olivia. A kindergartner at Teleka Elementary has been hard to keep track of.
Earlier in the school year, she had let off at the wrong stop a couple of times.
One time I had to go looking for her, but this time I know she's on, she gets off. I think it's a great idea.
It has a special name.
My Z-Pass.
Z-Pass from the Seattle company Zono.
Why do you have a Z-Pass?
Because we need to go on the bus.
Yeah, so you get off at the right stop, right?
Right.
As a special bonus with a Z-Pass, should a child fall asleep in the backseat or something and doesn't get up, well, they'll know right away. The bus driver's already pressed a red button, this is just a second safety card.
We'll also know in the office that, who that particular student is within that moment's notice.
Each of the district's school buses already has GPS tracking and cameras onboard. And now, this pilot project at four schools to see if real-time student tracking is worth a $50,000 expense to install it district-wide. In Lakewood, Keith Ulrich, come on in.
Thank you.
The next part of the system I'm speaking of is SafeStop. This is the parental portal. This will be downloaded by parents or most of our students. And what this will do is, it will give them real-time coverage of their buses. It will give 30 minutes and 30 minutes, they will be able to view it 30 minutes before and 30 minutes after their scheduled time. So that will give students, if a bus is running a few minutes earlier, a few minutes late, it's going to give that updated information with that. And this is just a view of, this is what's going to pop up on your cellphone to be able to look at that and see the time and location. And I do have another video with this.
Thank you for calling Washington High School. It's me again. I'm sorry to call, but seriously, where is my child's bus?
Although many factors might alter the bus schedule, parents and students still need to know when the bus is coming. Getting that information pinned to transportation officials and back out to parents is a challenge, and SafeStop meets that challenge. SafeStop is a school bus tracking app that integrates seamlessly with your school's existing GPS provider and serves the needs of the students, the parents, and the administrators. With neighborhood maps and expected arrival times for each bus stop in the palm of their hand, our map-viewed bus locator system shows parents and administrators where the school bus is along its route and gives transportation staff the ability to send real-time service notifications to parents through the alerts and messaging center. This provides you and your school's parents with the answer to that big question, where is the bus? But we know, late buses are not the only challenger facing. If you're like a lot of other school districts, you've already invested in tracking systems and software, but you don't have the tool that ties it all together. SafeStop analyzes the GPS data and routing information to allow administrators and transportation staff access to key data and analytics. That's data and analytics that can identify underused bus stops, monitor on-time performance, help you build more efficient routes, and provide additional vehicle information that helps create a safer, more reliable, and cost-efficient school transportation system, allowing you to keep as much money as possible in the classroom. So to give parents, students, and administrators the crucial information they need, hit SafeStop and answer all the questions, not just, where's the bus?
Okay. The last few things that I have is, when it's all said and done, we're looking at about $30 per bus per year to run this system. We're looking at a tentative schedule of March 1st for implementation, you know, depending on when we can get the parts and the information to be downloaded so we can do the installs. But we're looking at a March 1st. We are going to have our own mechanics, we'll be able to do the install, so that's going to help with the price-wise. But I do think it's a great system. I do think it's very beneficial. I think there's a lot of positives that we can see throughout LPS and the Lawton community. Do you have any questions for me?
So you said it would be implemented, you think, by March?
We're shooting for March 1st, and that's, if we can get things ordered by the middle of January, we're thinking that we can get parts in, and once we get that, we can start working on the installs and then have the training and tentative lives. If everything goes well, we can look at March 1st.
And how big of the fleet are you going to?
100 buses.
The 100?
Is what we're going to, we're going to look at going forward, 100 buses, yes.
Is that all of them?
That will be all of our route buses at this time. It will be, it will be around 10, around 10 activity buses.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're on item six, Architect and Construction Manager Risk Update.
Good evening. Trip hazard. I'm Corey Miller with Architects in Partnership. Want to give a quick update of the miscellaneous projects around the district. Lawton High's windows is about 75% complete. You'll notice they've come around the north side of the building on the second floor now, and you can see that from the Shoemaker Center. The re-roof projects at Carriage Hills, Tomlinson, and Lawton High, waiting on some punch list items to be completed and O&amp;M manuals to be submitted before we close that project out. The Edison re-roof project, there's just a handful of punch list items left there, and some revisions to those O&amp;M manuals, and that'll be done. Adams re-roof, they've ordered material there, and they're getting ready to start pending weather, hopefully this week. MacArthur Middle School HVAC, we've re-inspected those punch list items. They've got just a handful of touch-up left there, and their O&amp;M manuals are in the back of my car, ready to be delivered. Jeremy, if I can catch you on the way out. Woodland Hills, Lincoln and Adams HVAC projects, we inspected Woodland Hills for substantial completion today. That'll be submitted for board approval at the next meeting, and Lincoln is 95% complete. MacArthur High Windows, that punch list has been completed, and they'll be revising some O&amp;M items, and that project will be ready to close out. MacArthur High Cafeteria, we've got some work to do on the kitchen hood required by the fire marshal. You'll see that there's a change order item on the agenda for later this evening on that, and that should be the last of that. We'll get into more detail on Eisenhower Middle School and the safe rooms with Crossland. But, you know, they're making great progress at Eisenhower. They finished piers the other day, a couple of days ahead of schedule, I believe. So I'm overstepping already. But I know they've been ramping up production on the grade beams and getting ready to pour the first part of the slab, I think, next week. Safe Rooms, we got our fourth building in the air. We've got foundations poured on the last two, so making substantial gains there, recovering from the weather, so.
Will be ready for spring, is that?
Yes, yes. We are starting to dry out a bit, so I'll let them take it over from here.
Good evening. Mike Chaney, Project Manager for the Eisenhower project. Just to kind of give an update on Eisenhower, all of the grade beams are going in right now for D, Area D, and we're actually into Area C right now. As far as piers, we have about a week left. We had a lot of vacation happen at the end of the year, so we decided to stick with grade beams. That's a lot more important, and it won't put anything behind schedule. With all the rain that's happened, originally put us about 15 days behind. We were able to catch up, and we're only about maybe five to six days behind now. And we're continuously trying to push that pretty hard on the grade beams to get us caught back up to where we need to be. We're doing storm, and some of the sewer is going in on the, around the high school where their monument sign is right now. So they're starting to work across there, and we'll be getting into the slab again next week. Is it going to be a portion of it? But we'll start big pours for the slab starting next month, beginning of next month. Any questions on update for Eisenhower?
I know, it's just a guess at this point, but completion date, when do you think?
Completion date right now, we're anticipating around March, April timeframe of 2020. Depending how that goes, that is a very rough estimate. There's a lot of things. But that's kind of what we're anticipating right now, is around that March, April timeframe, 2020, for the new building to be completed and us to start the, looking into timeframe to looking for movement of the existing structure into the new one. And then we can start demoing of the old one. Any other questions?
I'm Jeff Williams with Crossland Construction Company. I'm the Project Manager over the Safe Rooms project. Just give you a quick update on where we're at with those. Almore West, we've got the structure up, Corey mentioned. We're working on some of the interior concrete. That one was a strange one. That one's been up the longest, and I'm sure some of you have noticed, but, you know, on the last day of installing the panels, erecting the structure, it rained on us. So interior of that building got soaking wet, so we had to wait for it to dry out and get kind of caught up on it. And so, we're getting ready to start placement of that, probably the first of next week, that floors lab. Edison, the structure is up. Interior concrete should be placed this Wednesday. Hugh Bish, the structure is up. We're working on the interior plumbing under the floors lab. Crosby Park, we are installing the structure this week. It should be up by the end of this week, so that's another exciting one. Sullivan Village, the foundation is complete. The structure should be going up next week. And then, Carriage Hills, the foundation is complete, and the structure should be going up within two weeks. Overall, again, all structures over the next few weeks should be up. The interior walls, the plumbing, the electrical, and the HVAC work should all begin over the next couple of weeks. And then, site grading and roofing. So we're getting caught back up from the rain that we had and slowed us down a little bit, but we're catching back up.
What's the completion on those?
Well, mid to late March.
Approximately, yeah.
All the safe rooms, as soon as they're ready for an inspection to be FEMA-rated, they will be available for use if anything comes up. So as soon as they're ready, we're going to be, allow them to be used so that.
Good, since April's easily funded.
Yes, so, but we're looking mid to late March of completion. Any other questions?
All right, thank you. And you all are welcome to stay, but you're also, if you need to go, we understand. But thank you all very much. Okay, item number seven, Report of the Superintendent. All right, under item 7A, with the Board President's permission, I'm not going to read the whole thing. But this is a board-level position that I've been on, this will be my second time. And since we are the biggest depositor in this, it's the Oklahoma Liquid Access Pool for school districts, I vouch for everybody on that list except for me, and so I'd like to recommend that the Board approve as the voting members.
I'll vote for approval.
Thank you. Colville, please.
Ms. Edward?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Chester?
Yes. Item 7B. All right, under 7B, with, again, the Board's permission, I'm going to move over there. I didn't want to do a presentation staring sideways, actually, so. And I think the staff agreed that it was my turn to do a presentation, so. All right, so as everybody here knows, the Board this year decided to do goals in the form of big rocks, areas of importance for the first time in a long time. And so, that has been invaluable to us, and one of, you know, we've got the, we've got safety and security, we've got, now my mind's going, academic excellence, and then we have got customer service. But the one that's kind of really hard to address and really difficult is accountability. But first, I think the Board needs to know that just because the Board has set goals, and every board meeting is now asking questions, asking for different data, asking for different reports. CMAR and architect is another example, but just the fact that you have areas important and you're asking those questions, that inherently builds in accountability. But what we're going to talk about, I'm going to try to give you what we thought about, and if you'll go to this picture here. We all drive across bridges all the time, but we never really feel the need to get out and check underneath before we drive across because we know there are certain accountability structures, that bridge has been inspected, the bridge has certain, we just trust that there are certain things that make this bridge safe. And so, I want to approach it from that. What the staff and I have been talking about is, we don't know, and I can't really put my finger on it, has the Board ever really had a thorough review, bird's-eye view, 30,000-foot level, of what kind of structures exist in the school district that can help? They help me sleep at night. Without these in place, it would be. But knowing what's in place and how they work would help the Board understand, and we've really never given the Board a picture of what those accountability structures look like. These are the areas we decided to cover, financial services or financial issues, it's a big issue, student, transportation, personnel, child nutrition, health and safety, and of course, our facilities. And Mr. Tanner just gave us kind of an idea of the accountability we're going on the facilities. So we're just, what we'll do, I'm just going to break each one of the. So we're just, what we'll do, I'm just going to break each one of these apart. First, I'm going to give you an idea of what the support mechanisms are there. Quite often, it's the State Department of Education. And then secondly, maybe some examples. These are not comprehensive, but they just want to give the board a sense of reassurance of what's going on behind the scenes. That way, when you get a phone call, not if, when you get a text, when you get an email, you can say, okay, I'm at least sure that we can drive across this bridge, we might need to check it out, but we know there's some structures in place to make sure that we're all protected, not as a school district, not only a school district, but also as board members. These are pretty standard, no matter which department is covered in this district. Everybody here has to live with federal laws and state laws. Everybody here has to live with Oklahoma State Department of Education and federal, the United States Department of Education. In the absence of either one of those, that's why we have district policy, district policy in a lot, and really, in any functional sense, is actually law for us as a school district. It's what protects you, it's what guides us, it's what keeps everybody on the same page. Then, of course, you hire me as the superintendent, and we also hire professional licensed and certified staff, many of them in this room, but we have about 2,000 that aren't in this room right now, and they all have license, not all, but many of them have licenses, et cetera. Two things that I think people overlook sometimes is the Open Meetings Act, which ensure, that's why we have to talk about all these things in public. We have public business meetings, we cannot talk in private, we cannot have secret meetings. And then there's the Open Records Act, which ensures that everybody at any time pretty much can ask for just about anything they want in the school district. There's no point in hiding or trying to cover anything up, because everything is an open record, just about everything. Unless it deals with FERPA, health issues, certain personnel issues, those have to be kept private by law. But other than law, we have Open Records Act, and that makes it very accessible and transparent for the community. And what I'm going to do now is I'm going to jump each to one of those areas and just real quickly skim over the top to give you a sense of how they work. Under financial accountability, we have several, we, a lot of people may not realize, it's County Exercise Board. They approve our budget every year, they approve our estimate of needs, they have to meet and say, yes, not only did the state allocation look good, but the plans for the school district to appropriate those funds is actually appropriate. We have the county assessor and treasurer who are kind of a separate set of watchdogs for us. The assessor makes sure everything's counting, the treasurer helps as well. You all, of course, is the Board of Education. In addition to that, the state approves a certain list of auditors, they have to pass a certain, to be on the list, we have a state-approved auditor that every year looks at every penny we spend. Bond ballot language, and that has to do with our sales tax and our bonds, we cannot spend money outside of those. It has to meet the intent of the language that we, that the voters voted for. The city council, because we do have a sales tax, also has some oversight here, because we spend sales tax money that comes from a sales tax initiative. And then finally, these men and women are represented in here, but we've got an entire office of finance, payroll, personnel, and what they do on a daily basis is make sure we're in compliance with the IRS, the State Department, all those other issues. So we've got a tremendous set of, and I call them structures, accountability is not there to get you in trouble, it's to keep you in the middle of the road, keep us from going off. Here's some examples, we do an annual audit, we have an annual budget that's approved by the Exercise Board and the state of Oklahoma. Everything you want to know about our school district is on the Oklahoma State Department website, if you're dealing with financial issues, if you don't know where to find it, ask me, I can point you there, it's, they've made it fairly easy to find. We have monthly treasurer reports where the board gets to hear all our balances. In addition to that, we have some local structures that other districts don't have, a site bond, a bond oversight committee which meets twice a year, and it reports back to the board on whether or not we're spending all our money appropriately, and we've met every six months since we instituted that board, I believe it's been five full years, and every six months they come back and say the board, the district, not only spending the money correctly, but what they plan to spend it on over the next six months is actually appropriate as well. We have sanctioning process, which Ms. Nyworth is very familiar with, make sure our clubs are following all the rules. That can be very, when we're dealing with volunteers, that helps. And then, of course, LPS, over the last six years, has commissioned several audits on its own that were not required. We're awaiting one, we did one earlier this year, and I think we've done three others in the time that I've been here. That's an extra thing we didn't have to do, but the board wanted to make sure there wasn't any doubt or any confusion. Next thing, Educational Student Services, this is Dr. Polk's wheelhouse here. We have a gentleman named Ryan Piper, everybody here, every principal knows Ryan Piper. He comes by, it seems like about every other day, and checks and makes sure that all our rules, we're following, he audits everything from personnel to health insurance to how many, make sure all our bus drivers have the appropriate certification. We're also in the Department of Career and Technology, but a lot of people don't realize, because we do receive career tech monies. We have some layers of the district that's put in place, the district, DEIC, which means any staff member, any certified, really, they have a concern about the curriculum, they can bring it right up through the chain of command, and it goes straight to the board eventually, and they work on that committee monthly. We get College Board, ACT, all of these different organizations that we partner with. In addition to that, OSSAA helps keep Mr. Dees on his toes, which we can't have a team unless we do extensive reporting, we have to report the numbers, the size of our high school, all these things are in play constantly. And then finally, if we, any student, staff member, they have the right to go to the Office of Civil Rights if they feel like any of their federally protected rights have been violated. And so all of those things are in place. I'm not sure how many businesses have to deal with all of those, but they're realities for us on a regular day. Some examples, the state tests we take every year, that's an accountability system. The college readiness dropout reports and ACT reports and the Reading Sufficiency Act reports that we present here every year, that's an accountability measure. OSSAA sanctioning processes, school profiles, there are two, there's the old school report card, which now is just called a school profile, that's schoolreportcard.org, and then the new ADF, which has not come out yet, they, okay, they're saying Friday again, they said Friday last week, too. This'll be the third Friday in a row. We'll see how that happens, but they've got a new, and then, of course, anything student, staff level, that is not resolved by the staff ultimately has an opportunity to go straight to the board. The board has an opportunity, staff members, parents, teachers, well, teachers and staff and students have the right to go to the board-level hearing if things aren't resolved adequately. So you always know, whatever happens, it's going to be addressed ultimately, or the board will find out about it. That's the level of accountability that I think really helps. Transportation, this one's Mr. Cook just shared today, and some of the things we have transportation, they have to take the same CDL test that everybody driving a semi, everybody driving any other CDL vehicle, they do not give bus drivers any breaks, they have to take the same test, and a lot of it seems kind of strange, and that makes a big, that makes it really hard for bus drivers sometimes for us to get bus drivers, because Mr. Cook and his staff has to train them quite often. Oklahoma Department of Safety, et cetera, Oklahoma State Department has their own Department of Transportation, they constantly, of course, Mr. Piper shows up at least twice a year, sits down with Mr. Cook, and makes sure all our bus drivers have had their DMVR and had their drug tests, random drug tests, et cetera, which are some of the examples. Every bus driver, every employee, I'm on that list, I don't know if I'm on the active driver list this year, but random drug tests, you have to take a drug test and submit a clean Department of Motor Vehicle report before you can drive for the district, lots of things, they annually require professional development, there are just several things in place, they do annual training, and of course, there are just probably 100 things here I could also, because really, the Transportation Department is probably the most regulated single department of our entire district. We've got so many overlaps there, but one of the next one is personnel, we deal with personnel issues quite a bit. I don't know how regular businesses do it, I'm a public school guy, so I don't have any other perspective, but everything that normal businesses have to deal with, Internal Revenue Service, Department of Labor, Office of Civil Rights, I don't know if you deal with that much in a normal business, EEOC, and then the district has actually established its own, and I've got to give Ms. Ellis some praise, because for the first time in several years, our Support Personnel Policy Development Committee is active, they have met several months in a row, and they are ready to engage, so now we only have the support side, we have the certified side, and they now will help fit those needs that we reconstituted the SPPDC this year to ensure that our support employees have a voice and are active. Ms. Ellis has been the pilot on that, so I appreciate it. And then, of course, again, Ryan Piper shows up every once in a while, wants to see who's working where and what they're getting paid, all those other things, and he looks at every single one of them. Some examples, background checks on all staff, nobody can work for the public school without getting a background check, and extensive, it's a fingerprint system, you have to go, I believe it's FBI background check. School personnel reports, those go to the State Department, make sure we're paying everybody correctly. Ms. Ellis just had a Family Medical Leave Act audit, which, of course, she passed with flying colors, and we're updating our policy as a result of that. EEOC and grievance process and the appeals process, just again, if any staff member at any time feels like they've been treated unfairly, we have a process where any staff member, and once they file the grievance process, it protects them during that process to make sure that the board hears, or has an opportunity, work our hardest, we do get some of those, but we work very hard to address them before they come to the board. The last thing we want is anything to go to the board that we haven't been able to resolve, but sometimes occasionally that happens. And board-level appeals, again, anything that happens in the district regarding anybody's employment. Child nutrition, Mr. Dyer has his hands full at, and occasionally you get a lot of, but one of the things a lot of people don't realize, US Department of Agriculture, it's not anybody else, that's who's over. They're over everything child nutrition-related, and they have all the same rules that any restaurant would have, they have to make sure the equipment, the facilities, all those things, and I've been in a district once, when I was a teacher, that had a bad health report, you do not want that in a school kitchen. That's a bad thing for it to happen in the community, but everybody has to. In addition, SEDEXO has some different structures on the internal that they bring to the district that help ensure accountability. Some examples, random health department inspections, US Department of Agriculture audits, which Mr. Dyer informed me, we have a three-year administrative review every three years to make sure everything's, they look at how much salt you put in the gravy, they look at everything possible you can imagine. A lot of people don't realize, each one of our day, our staff members have to just, they have to record the temperature in the warming bins and the little heat steam tables, they have to record the temperature in the freezers and the milk. It's incredibly regulated area, and our staff does it every day in every building. And in addition to that, we also have a third-party auditor that Mr. Dyer has brought on to give us an extra set of eyes and ears to ensure that we're doing everything correctly. Health and safety, this is a big issue to everybody, of course. We have the same measures as everybody else in the health department, but in addition to this, we have, at Lawton Public Schools, we actually have health professionals, nurses, we have physical therapists, occupational therapists, they have licenses, and they have licenses, if they don't follow these rules, not only are the district in trouble, but they could lose their license as well. So we've got these different levels of accountability. Our insurance group, Oklahoma School Insurance Group, helps us a lot with resources and training, and then you all have heard of these two terms, at least one of them, OSHA, and then POSH, which is the public employees branch of OSHA, and I don't know why they need a separate branch, but Ms. Ellis is, she's learned me a lot. I don't know why there is a OSHA and a POSH, but they do the same thing, just in different categories. Some examples, we have, I don't know if everybody realizes, and again, we're covering everything to make sure the board is aware, I'm pretty sure you're aware of this, we have fire, tornado, evacuation, emergency drills. Every school's required to do it, and guess who checks them? Ryan Piper. We have drug testing for staff members, for example, if I fall and break my arm, Ms. Ellis is going to send me to get a drug test, make sure that I wasn't involved in anything inappropriate. We have asbestos, they come in and check our asbestos annually. They check our fire alarm inspection suppression systems. In addition to that, we also, again, I jumped the gun, Ryan Piper comes, he makes sure all of these things, he needs to know the date that we did this and when we did it and how long it took to get out of the building. All of those things have to happen. Some examples, oh, now we're on facilities, go quickly over this, because I think you have a good sense with SEDEXO and what Mr. Tanner's doing here, but everything we have to do that you have to do in a home, and one of the, we're responsible for. And one of the things that really helps us is the utility companies, they are one of our biggest watchdogs, they can alert us to things that we never would have been aware of. Gas, water companies will say, hey, you're using a lot of water here, do you have a leak? So those are some watchdogs and some extra sets of eyes on there. Of course, we have a CMAR and an architect who've left. But some examples, fire marshal inspections, the most powerful person in the district is the fire marshal, he says, do this, and we're going to do it. Twice a year, or once every two years, every site in the district is completely inventoried by Tracy over in Finance, they do a fixed assets inventory, they count everything in every building. That'll be a lot easier now with SEDEXO doing that on the other side. We have, tomorrow is our CMR, our monthly CMAR and architect meetings, and also that, each one of our sites, our classrooms and departments, we have to inventory my office every year, so we're keeping track of our inventory, but the best thing for our facilities is we have thousands of staff and students who daily are in the buildings, and they are, if they see something wrong, they call us. So that's one of the best, people are constantly in our buildings, and that's a great source of accountability. I want to give everybody perspective here. Our budget is larger than the budget of most cities in the state of Oklahoma, think about that. Most cities do not have $170 million budget, which is what our budget roughly this year. I'm sure I'm off $10 million or so, but 170 million-ish. Lawton High is larger than the average school district in Oklahoma, the average school district in a home is 1,300 students. Lawton High has 1,700 students. Their Freedom Elementary is larger than 400 of the 526 school districts in the state. Think about, the entire school district, Freedom is larger than 400 of them. Half of our schools are bigger than the bottom half of school districts in the state. Lawton is an enormous, we got the largest transportation, food service, technology, even healthcare in southwestern Oklahoma, we're one of the largest agencies in all of those areas. And with this, you think about it, that means hundreds of thousands of interactions of staff, of students, of parents, of phone calls, of problems and concerns and issues, and you all know how many phone calls you get. You get emails, you may feel like you get a lot of emails, but there are hundreds of thousands of potential emails that don't come, because our staff take care of everything. And so I just wanted to give you, again, I'm open for any questions, but I want the, now the last picture, you can see the bridge pretty clearly, but hopefully, by understanding what's in place, I want the board and the community to understand, sometimes it's not as clear, but if you understand what underlying processes are there to keep everybody safe, then you'll cross that bridge. It might slow down a little bit, but if we have to, if I had to stop at every bridge that I come across and inspect it underneath, we'd never get anything done. But I have utmost faith in our staff, these processes, and the people that are here support us, so any questions that you all might have? I'm sure you got some. All right, I'll return to my spot.
Thank you very much. Very thorough report.
Thank you. I got to get back and sign in, sorry.
Okay, item number eight is the consent agenda. Oh, superintendent's announcement, sorry.
I just got two pieces of good news to share. First, and, oh goodness, I don't know, I'm going to flip a coin first and foremost, I don't know which one is more important. Board member Kelly Edwards and husband Kobe recently saw their efforts rewarded a big way when their firm, Lawton Marketing Group, was announced as a 2018 Markham Award winner. Is this the same award you got last year?
No, it's not.
Different.
It's a bigger one.
It's a bigger one, yeah.
It's bigger.
It's a much bigger one.
Much bigger.
It's a much bigger deal.
We had one just last year, and that was an international competition. This is an international award, 6,500 entries from 18 other countries, and it was awarded a gold medal for best financial website design, so that is a big deal, so congratulations. And it is kind of official, because we have a party come Wednesday. Ms. Barbara Ellis is retiring after 46 years, it'll be 46 years in May, and Wednesday is her birthday and also her retirement celebration, and Ms. Bradley, we would like you to come if you can, it's Christ Street here, is it 5 o'clock, 4:30?
Four.
Four to 5:30.
Four o'clock, don't ever ask me for a time. I'll get you, four o'clock Wednesday, but everybody here, Central Middle School, we expect everybody to be here, but again, we're in awe of Ms. Ellis for 46 years in this district, she's a force to be reckoned with, just say that. Okay, that concludes my part.
Okay, consent agenda, is there, are there any items that need to be removed?
Move your consent agenda.
Second.
I'll second.
Call roll please.
Ms. Nyworth?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Okay, we have a proposed executive session? Yes. Okay.
Make a motion to the executive session.
Second.
Call roll please.
Ms. Nyworth?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.[570.38] Yes. (pause)